Luck of the draw, we've got everybody seated in the order that will start. We'd like to remind everyone that we are on Channel 9 and that the forum is being videotaped and will be shown over Channel 9 over the next few weeks between now and then Election Day. We will finish the candidate forums tomorrow night on some of the other races. Each candidate will be given a two-minute time for introductions or introductory comments or remarks, and then we'll go into questions. During the questions, each candidate will have, let's just limit it to one minute, to answer the question. Please, as best as we can, stick to the question. Then, at the end, we'll do the summations by each candidate, and if there's anything you want to throw in there, or things that we haven't covered that you think are important for the voters in Gage County to know, feel free in adding those comments. I would caution you that our timekeeper, Karen Engelmann, has arrived early tonight, and she has installed electrical devices under each of your seats.[66.11][66.11](Laughter). So, we're on a time schedule, we've got several forums tonight, so please try and limit to our time limits. The questions that we'll be asking were submitted to the Chamber office prior to this evening, and if there's questions from members here in the audience, please pass them on to either Heather or Angie, and we'll see if we can squeeze some of those in, too. We've tried to limit the questions to those that pertain to business-related items and how the school board operates, done the best we can. But, again, at the end, feel free to, if we've missed something you think is important, add it to your summations. Let's start with beginning introductory statements, and Nancy, we'll start with you.
First of all, I would like to thank the Beatrice Chamber of Commerce for this opportunity to participate in this forum. I am Nancy Sidloczek, and I resided in Gage County for most of my life. I and my husband Lowell have four sons that attended and graduated from Beatrice Public Schools. Nick, Alex, Cameron, all have college degrees now. Our youngest son, Trevor, graduated in May of 2012, thanks to the support and dedication for the teachers, the administrative and support staff at Beatrice Public Schools. Also, many thanks to our community that shared in his development as a wonderful person. Trevor is now attending Midland University with the goal of teaching secondary education and coaching. I am a graduate of the University of Nebraska Teachers College with a Bachelor of Science degree in Education. I am employed by the State of Nebraska Workman's Compensation Court as the court's vocational rehabilitation manager. I supervise a staff of six and work yearly on teams with projects within my budget for the fiscal year. And so, I believe that children are our future, and we must invest in the education of those children. They're teachers in the Beatrice Public Schools, giving them the tools for success.
Thank you, Nancy. Mr. Loefing?
Want to apologize for my cold, which I just got today. Monty Loefing, lived in Beatrice for 27 years. My wife Donna is a para at preschool at the Y. I have a daughter, Kenzie, who's a sophomore in the Beatrice School. My son Christopher is 22, and he's a film director in Fresno, California. His goal is to finish a film that he hopes to hit on the big screen, and hopefully Dad can retire early. That's his goal, not mine.[234.81][234.81](Laughter). I want to say a big thank you to, first of all, those who elected me in 2008. It was an honor to serve as a board member in District 15. I ask for your votes again to reelect me for another term, and if elected, I will continue to do my best and speak out and represent our students, and continue to do what's best for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Monty. Mr. Zimmerman?
My name is John Zimmerman. I want to thank everyone for coming and for everyone who's watching. I've been on the school board for four years now, and looking back over the past four years, I look at the things that we've managed to accomplish. We hired a new superintendent. We hired a new business manager. We tried to open up our board to be more friendly to the public, so that you saw what was going on, less closed. Took out the committees we had and opened up a committee of the whole, so everyone from the community can come and sit and watch how we do what we do, learn how we learn the things. We've started our own alternative schooling that used to be at the ESU, so that we could better serve our students, we decided to take it on ourselves. It's running fantastically. We've done extensive remodeling in the buildings throughout the past four years. We've come up with a new stadium. We have, right now, we've just hired a new interim superintendent to finish out the year, and we will be hiring a new superintendent for the next year. So, this is something that, it takes someone who's been in here, that knows what's going on, and if you give me your support, I feel that's something I can help to contribute to. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Mrs. Byers?
First of all, I would, again, like to thank the Chamber for hosting this forum, and you, Jim, for being the moderator this evening. I'm Janet Byers, I'm running for, as a candidate for the Beatrice School Board. I've had many people ask me why I'm running, and one thing comes to the top all the time, and that is, I believe, in strong community involvement. And I think you need to be involved in the community in order to make it a better place for everyone to live and work. And running for the school board has been on my mind for a long time, and I'm now at a point in my life where I do have the time to devote to it. My parents always spoke of giving back to the community, and they did by example, give back to their church and community, and I have served on numerous boards and in numerous organizations, and I hope I learned that lesson well and have continued what they taught me. I believe that the Beatrice Public Schools is one of our greatest economic development tools. I think the strong schools promote people coming to our community and seeing what quality of life we have to offer to them. My husband and I have been in this community for over 30 years. We've raised two boys here, Mark and John. They are both graduates of the Beatrice High School and are gainfully employed and have families. And we also have two grandchildren. Providing opportunities to our students, establishing an exciting work environment for our staff, and establishing adequate workable policies for administrators, and understanding the importance of cost-effectiveness for our taxpayers are the goals that I would work to achieve if I were elected to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Mrs. Peeper, you're next.
Thanks, Jim. My name is Lisa Peeper. I am currently finishing out my first four-year term on the school board. My husband Doug and I, with the exception of a short stint in Minnesota after college, choose to live and reside and work here in Beatrice. That is one of the reasons, I guess, I decided to run for school board. We have three children in the district. Our son is a 16-year-old junior out at the high school. We have a daughter that's an eighth grader at middle school, and we have one in third grade at the elementary level. So, we feel right now we've got a pretty good pulse on everything that's going on, or at least, not everything, but, you know, some level at each level in the district. I, like Janet, have been involved in a number of church and community organizations, and I believe that a strong educational system contributes to a healthy, thriving community and is a great community development tool. I guess we have done so much in the last four years. We have expanded our preschool program, done with alternative high school. I just think we're offering opportunities to kids that may not have had those opportunities before. I guess I would like to continue to expand our programs and offer all the kids of the district the opportunities that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Coleman, your introductory remarks.
Hi, my name is Randy Coleman. I'm a 14-year resident of Beatrice, and I'm presently completing my first term of office as a District 15 Board of Education member, and I currently hold the office of Vice President. I have 29 years of experience in education as a former teacher, coach, and administrator, and my wife Vicky teaches and coaches at Goodrich Middle School in Lincoln. Our oldest daughter, Lindsay, teaches at Irving Middle School in Lincoln. She's also the mother of our two grandchildren presently. Our second daughter, Brittany, graduated from law school at UNL, is employed at Lancaster County Attorney's Office in Lincoln, and she's expecting our third grandchild in about a week. And our youngest son, Justin, is presently a junior at Iowa State University in Ames, Iowa, and he's a member of the Cyclone Football Team. So, you can see, all three graduated from Beatrice Public Schools, and that shows, I think, a strong commitment to Beatrice and its educational system. The community of Beatrice and its educational system have great things to offer, and for that reason, my wife Vicky and I have chosen to make this our home. I've worked at Plymouth Industries for the past six years in business development, operations, and am currently the Sales Manager. During the past three to four years, manufacturing has suffered as our economy has faltered, so I am aware of the working person's financial concerns during tough economic times. Spending the tax dollar prudently and wisely is in all of our best interests. However, not spending it all and voting no on everything is not always in the best interests of progress. Please remember, when you're standing still, you're actually moving backwards. Because of my past experience in education, in my experience in the past term on the school board, I believe I have a great understanding of the issues that we're currently facing as a school district. These issues promise to only get tougher as state funding diminishes and our need to stretch the tax dollar will increase and increase. I look forward to the chance to discuss the issues facing education in our district tonight, and I welcome the opportunity to share our ideas as we help move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. We're now going to start into the questions, and Monty, you get the first one here, and then we'll kind of go on down the line. Mr. Loefing, what qualities do you have that would make you the best candidate for this office? And try and be specific.
I don't proclaim to be the best candidate in any office, but I feel I have a strong level of listening and speaking abilities. I feel I relate to the public. I feel the public likes to talk to me, enjoys me. I hear, I listen. I don't have an agenda. I leave my baggage at home, and I care about our students. I like to be involved with our students. I feel the board has not done quite that good a job of being involved with the public, with the students, and I think we need to do that more. I'm concerned about our poverty in our schools, 51 percent. I think the board needs to, excuse me, address that, and so hopefully, if I'm reelected, that I will get that opportunity to do those things.
Thank you, Mr. Loefing. Mr. Zimmerman, the same question. What qualities do you have that would make you the best candidate for this office?
I have a knowledge and understanding of board policy and state statutes in regards to education. This will help ensure that we adhere to and apply policies appropriately. I can discuss and debate without being argumentative. With any group of people, you're going to get those who don't see eye to eye, and to be able to work with them to develop a working relationship so that you don't have to constantly argue and get into gridlock is very important. And also willing to give my time. It doesn't sound like a lot, but when you consider all the meetings, the committees that we go to, the conventions, everything takes time, and if you aren't willing to give that up and to show up and be prepared, then it's not worth being on the board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Mrs. Byers, same question. What qualities do you have that would make you the best candidate for this office?
Number one, I think I have good communication skills. I know a lot of people in the community. I have good relationships with a lot of people in the community. I've been, again, on numerous boards and organizations where we have worked to build a consensus, and that doesn't mean that we've always agreed every single time, but we work to build a consensus to do what's best in the long run for everyone involved. I don't think anybody has all the answers and is always right, so I think that I would be good at listening and working with people. In my job at the Board of Public Works as the Office Manager, I have an extensive background in finance and budgeting. I have done grant writing. I've worked with health insurance, workers' comp insurance. I'm somebody who asks a lot of questions. If I don't know the answer, I seek to find an answer to whatever is being discussed. And now I have to stop.[893.12][893.12](Laughter).
Thank you, Mrs. Byers. Mrs. Peeper, the same question. What qualities do you have that would make you the best candidate for this office?
Well, first of all, great boards just don't happen. They take a lot of work and a lot of commitment, and I think I possess the willingness to put in that extra time, the necessary time and effort, to fulfill my responsibilities. I spend a lot of time in the evenings researching how other districts may be handling an issue that is similar to ours. I also think that I'm an advocate for the district. I know a lot of people in the community, and I think I work to promote the goals and interests of our students and our district within the community, without forgetting who the true beneficiaries are, and that is our kids. I am not here to represent any special interest group or anyone but the children.
Thank you, Mrs. Peeper. Mr. Coleman, the same question. What qualities do you have that would make you the best candidate for this office?
Well, I think first, first of all, being on the board at this time, you have to be a decision-maker. These are tough economic times, as I talked about before, and you have to make some tough decisions, understanding that you're not going to make everybody happy. There's going to be people on both sides of the fences, but you also have to understand that you are dealing with their tax dollar, and you're also dealing with their most precious thing, their son or their daughter. And so, I think that's very, very important that you understand that from the outset and you look at it from that perspective. My background is very strong in education. I've got a master's degree in educational administration, and I understand budget and school governance. Probably my biggest thing, I have a desire to move forward. We've done some really good things here. Been here 14 years and part of the school district. We have set the groundwork and have really great things in place to continue moving forward. So, I think I would like to be, or the reason I ran again is to be part of that, because we do have some great things to look forward to. And lastly, I'm fiscally responsible. When you deal with the $21 or $22 million budget, you have to know how to make tough decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Mrs. Sidloczek, the same question. What qualities do you have that would make you the best candidate for this office?
Well, having taught in public schools, I understand where the children are coming from and teachers. And I have excellent communication skills, and I want to listen to what the constituents in the district are saying, and I want to work with the board, if elected, in order to process and do better for those children. I have a lot of experience working with teams and mediating and negotiating, and so I think that I can bring to the table with the board to work together as a team and listen to them. I agree that not everyone is going to agree with the board's decisions, but in any case, we need to work together. And so, I am hoping that, given the opportunity, that I can go forward and work with this board.
Thank you, Nancy. The next question, Mr. Zimmerman, we're going to start with you, and it's a three-part question. The first part is, in dealing with declining tax revenues, what part of the budget or programs that you would consider reducing or cutting? Are there any programs that you consider are essential, and, for lack of a better word, sacred cows? And how do you foresee raising additional needed funds?
This is never an easy answered question, something we've been working on for the past few years and will continue, especially with the lack of federal funding that is coming down, as well as state funding. We have looked at every position, administrative, teaching, para, education. We lose them usually more than any other. Nothing has been kept off the table to look at. As far as programs that are essential, that we can't lose, those that help us to meet our federal guidelines and national standards, those we can't lose. The others we have to look at, and then, I'm running out of time here. So, I will keep looking at all of these, and we've also put in an administrative team that does look at these and constantly is looking for this in order to help us in the best way possible.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Mrs. Byers, the same question. Declining tax revenues, what parts of the budget would you consider trimming or cutting? Are there any programs that you consider are essential, that are the sacred cows, that shouldn't be touched? And how do you foresee raising additional needed funds?
First of all, I think you would need to review the current budget to see if there are any areas that could be cut or could be made more efficient. I think you would start with that. I think one of the things, the possibility of one elementary school is going to be very cost-effective if that comes to be, because you're not supporting four different buildings, you're supporting one building, so I think you could have some substantial cost savings down the road regarding utilities, grounds maintenance, technology. You're not quadrupling everything that you're doing. Essential programs, you have your essential programs. I, at this time, wouldn't know what I would want to cut. I think that there's some really important programs that you have to maintain. I think journalism is one, music programs, drama, athletics, speech, I think they all need to be maintained. But again, we need to look at everything and possibly look at working with adjoining school districts to maybe consolidate some programs so we can be more cost-effective all the way around.
Thank you, Mrs. Byers. Mrs. Peeper, same question. Dealing with declining tax revenues, what parts of the budget would you cut or trim? Are there any areas that you think are absolutely essential that shouldn't be touched? And how do you foresee raising additional needed funds?
Well, first of all, budget and cost-cutting is probably one of the most unpleasant tasks that we face as a board. It's part of the normal cycle of deficit and surplus. However, doing more with less is the norm these days. I don't believe that there are any easy targets out there that we can just say, "That needs to be cut, that needs to be cut." I think that we move forward as we have been. We ask our building administrators, prepare your budgets. Now, give me 95 percent of that budget, give me 90 percent of that budget. Let them decide at their level what might be an area where they're willing to reduce expense. I think that we also need to look at other ways to reduce costs, not just reduce our budget, but reduce costs. I think if we look at maybe doing something with our insurance benefits, possibly self-funding that plan for our teachers, I think we have to think outside the box. I know there are organizations out there that reward people that come to them with, you know, from within the organization, that are rewarded for major cost-saving ideas.
Thank you, Mrs. Peeper. Mr. Coleman, same question. Dealing with declining tax revenues, what parts of the budget would you consider cutting or totally or partially? What programs do you think are essential, should not be touched, and how do you foresee in raising additional needed funds?
Well, first of all, in regard to reducing and cutting, I think we have to take a close look at what's required for North-Central accreditation. Very important to our schools to make sure we maintain accreditation, so those things closest to that that are required, I think those things we can't look at reducing. I do think that everything else is on the table. I think we have to take a close look and evaluate and put everything on the table and look for strong recommendation from our staff and administration. They're the people that are closest. In regard to essential programs, to me, an essential program is that that is closest to the students. So, I'm going to try to look at things that are furthest away from student achievement. If we can stay away from our kids, stay away from hindering student achievement, that would be first and foremost. And then, lastly, in raising funds, you know, there are all kinds of options, but grants, there are tons of grants out there. We've explored some of that, we need to continue to do that. And then, lastly, Lisa mentioned, insurance costs. I think as they continue to skyrocket, we've got to look at insurance.
Mr. Coleman? Mrs. Sidloczek, your turn on this three-part question. Declining tax revenues, what parts of the budget would you consider trimming or cutting? What programs do you believe are essential and should be left alone? And how do you foresee in raising additional needed funds?
Well, not having reviewed the budget as of yet with the board, when elected, I would look forward to joining this board and being fiscally responsible to the students and the taxpayers of the district. We need to find ways to reduce costs while still meeting and maintaining federal accreditation. And then, lastly, we do need to look at grants and other federal venues to raise funds in order to meet the needs of our children.
Thank you, Nancy. Mr. Loefing, you get the last shot at this question. With dealing, with declining tax revenues, what parts of the budget would you consider trimming or cutting? What programs do you believe are essential and should be untouched? And how do you foresee raising additional needed funds?
Well, first of all, as a board, we've all tried to be fiscally responsible, although we've disagreed on how that should be done. But, I don't know, Dr. Lopez did a great job of cutting things across the board, and he tried to run with a lean ship. And so, to me, the biggest thing out there still is operating four elementaries. If we went to one elementary, considerable amount of electricity, fuel, labor, everything's going to be saved. And I agree with Mr. Coleman, the best way for additional funds is we've got to keep pursuing all these grants. There's a lot of grant money out there, and we've just got to keep going after it. So, that's how I would answer that question.
Thank you. I think I've hit everybody for that question, and Mrs. Byers, you get the next one, and some of you have touched on this, and I'm going to expand it a little bit. The question is, do you favor or oppose one central location for elementary, for an elementary school? Why or why not? And how would it be funded?
I would favor one location for elementary schools. Not only is it cost-effective, I think it allows the staff to work together and become experts in certain areas, so they're not having to do everything, that it can be spread among the staff. One person is teaching math, one person is teaching science, and they can really teach that to the best of their ability. I also think it's very cost-effective from a standpoint of you're not putting technology, again, in four buildings, and you're just not duplicating everything that you are in those buildings. But, as far as funding it, I think you need to go to a vote of the people. I think that's the way that you have to do it. I think anytime you spend taxpayer dollars, the taxpayers have to have a voice in how their tax dollars are spent, and so I would favor a bond issue.
Thank you, Janet. Mrs. Peeper, same question. Do you favor or oppose one central location for an elementary school in the district? Why or why not? And how would it be funded?
I, too, favor one elementary school building for our district. We have held community forums. Our research team from the Action Plan Committee for this specific part of the strategic plan has presented to us, the public, the board, anyone that, you know, was present, that this is the best solution for our district. It is indeed not only the best educational practice in a lot of areas, but we are going to be in a 21st century building that is more energy-efficient. We will not be moving four yards. Our buses will have one pit stop instead of four. Not only that, but our personnel, we are going to utilize, and I'm saying all resources, and that includes personnel, we're going to utilize those to the most efficient capacity. And unfortunately, I do have to say, the only way to accomplish that is putting it to the vote of the people, to the vote of the people with a bond issue. That's the only way you're going to finance a project of that size.
Thank you, Mrs. Peeper. Mr. Coleman, same question. Do you favor or oppose one central location for an elementary school in the district? Why or why not? How's it going to be funded?
Well, I, too, strongly would advocate one elementary location. I think that you're not duplicating services, you're not duplicating expenses. I think the cost-saving speaks for itself as far as personnel travel. But more importantly, I think, it lends itself to best practice. You now are putting your teachers in the best position for teachers to teach and students to learn, and I think, you know, it's the best of both worlds. Again, to fund it, as everybody else has said, I think that you've got to look at a bond issue, a vote of the people, and I really strongly favor us looking into this now, because I really believe it's going to happen down the road when we can retire the debt, the existing debt at the high school. And so, this is a process that we've got to engage in now, figure out where, costs, and so forth, but I really think we need to move into it as we retire the debt from the existing bond issue at the new high school.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Mrs. Sidloczek, same question. Do you favor or oppose one central location for an elementary school in the district? Why or why not? How are we going to fund it?
I, too, favor one central location for an elementary school. Teachers and students would have access to shared services. would have access to shared services, staff, technology at one physical location. We would save money with busing, grounds, and just the physical upkeep of all the elementary schools. And I feel that it would be best to vote, send a vote to the people for a bond issue as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Slachek. Mr. Lofing, same question. Do you favor or oppose one central location for an elementary school in the district? Why or why not? How are we going to fund it?
I don't think you're going to find a board member that is against this. After doing the tours, I went on three of the four tours, and there's something that really concerns me, and that's all these tours, we had less than 3% turnout. And so it kind of worries me. Is people not caring, or is this something we're really going to have to look at a different way of presenting? But we really need a new elementary, we really do. Our buildings are old and worn out. And so I hope that, you know, that we can find, people can donate some land. I believe we need 25 to 30 acres. I would support anywhere except for next to the high school. I just really feel that that's not a safe area. I feel that the traffic is terrible, the parking is terrible, and I want our kids to be safe and secure somewhere else. And I don't care where, whatever site works the best. I support whatever the board supports there. But the only way to pass this is we've got to work on, have a great design, we've got to show it to the people, we've got to get out there, and then we've got to have a bond. We've got to have the people say, "Yes, we will build." And it's got to be reasonable. And we've got to have, before we even do that, I think we've got to have our other bond, or the plan is to have our other bond paid off. And it won't probably fly if our other bond isn't paid off. So I don't think any board member is against this. We've all heard the stories. We know what's wrong, and we all want to fix it.
I've got to cut you off, Monty, before Karen throws the switch on you. Thanks, Monty. Mr. Zimmerman, same question. Do you favor or oppose one central location for an elementary school in the district? Why or why not? How are we going to fund it?
I am in favor as well of a new elementary school. With the increase in security issues as well as computer access, we want to send our children to school in a safe environment. We also want to send our kids to school with less technology. Everybody's looking at the new, all our kids have laptops. If we're going to do that, we need a new infrastructure as far as the wiring and the cables coming in. So we need to look at that as well as we are looking at paying off our present bond issue around 2016. So at that point, we need to look at bringing again another bond issue up to the public and trying to get it passed for another elementary school.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. The next question, if I've got my check marks right. Mrs. Peiper, we start with you. How do you see yourself working to a solution when not all members of the board agree on the approach or the action to be taken? And if in the minority, how would you react?
Well, believe it or not, over the course of the last four years, there have been several times when we have not all agreed on an issue. I think everyone around the table, as we're voting, is given an opportunity to air their opinion, discuss how they feel about the subject. Everyone has an equal opportunity before the vote is taken to make their opinions known. After the vote is taken, and you come out, maybe on the short end of the stick, I think we have all done a great job moving forward with the decision of the majority. You have to. We are a board. We function as a unit, not as an individual. I guess you have to evaluate the information that's presented, make the decision that you feel is in the best interest, again, of the people that it affects, and that's our kids. That's all you can do, is move forward if you're on the losing end of the vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Peiper. Mr. Coleman, same question. How do you see yourself working to a solution when not all members of the board agree on the approach or the action taken? And if in the minority position, how would you react, or how do you react?
Well, I think you have to act as a professional because you're not always going to get your way. I think the first thing is to do your homework, gather information, and be an informed voter, and make the best possible decision you can for the kids, the taxpayers, the school district, the staff members. And, you know, let the cards fall as they may. If you end up being in the minority, you need to move on. I think we've done a pretty good job of that, and I think that it's something that a prudent adult does. And then you move on, and you support the majority when you do that. I think it's really important to note that I don't think you always need 9-0 votes. I think it's good to have dissenters. I think it's good to represent the views of the community because not every vote is just cut into a 9-0. And I think we've done a good job of doing that. The other night, we voted 7-2. I have no problem with that, and I respect the people that voted against it, and I certainly understand why. As I said earlier, there's a lot of tough issues, and you're not going to make everyone happy.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Mrs. Slachek, same question. How do you see yourself working to a solution when not all members of the board agree on the approach or the action taken? And if in the minority position, how do you react?
Well, members on any team, they need to work together to produce the best product for the consumers. They must respect each other, be professional, and support the decisions, whether you agree or not, that have been made, and then go on and keep working together for the betterment of the community and the district.
Thank you, Nancy. Mr. Lofing, same question. How do you see yourself working to a solution when not all members of the board agree on the approach or the action taken? And if in the minority position, how would you react?
Well, first of all, I am always in the minority position most of the time. So I always feel that I move forward. I have always been prepared at meetings. I feel that I always bring a positive, my ideas to the board. Sometimes I feel they don't listen to me, and sometimes I feel they're negative toward me. But I feel that I'm a positive guy. I move past that. I still feel that there's a lot of good things we've done. There's a lot of good things we need to do together. Moving on is probably the best thing that we can all do. And now with the new leader and a new intern, hopefully that we will all be doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Lofing. Mr. Zimmerman, same question. How do you see yourself working in a solution to a solution when not all members of the board agree on the approach or the action taken? And if in the minority position, how do you react?
Well, this is a common occurrence with this board. It's a common occurrence with every board and every group of people that are out there working together. You don't, you come from different backgrounds, you don't always see eye to eye, and there's no need to. When you work together to find the best solution, it may not be what you wanted originally, it may not be what they wanted originally. But as long as it's in the best interest of our district or our children, then get on it, work on it, and pass something that will get the best achievement for the kids. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Mrs. Byers, same question. How do you see yourself working to a solution when not all members of the board agree on the approach or the action taken? And if in the minority position, how would you react?
Having worked on numerous boards in numerous organizations, there are disagreements. And I think a lot of times, your best ideas come from those disagreements because you can work with what one person brought to the table and another person brought to the table, and you can build consensus. You're not always going to agree, you're not always going to be happy about the decision. But at the end of the day, if the majority rules, that's what you go with. You walk away from it. I think you can absolutely disagree without being disagreeable because what you're dealing with is a subject, it's not a person. So you have to remember, it's not the person you're angry with, it is the disagreement on the subject. And I think you have to show ultimate respect for everybody's thoughts and ideas at the end of the day.
Thank you, Mrs. Byers. Mr. Coleman, you get the next question, and I'll forewarn all of you, this could be a loaded question. What tools do you feel could be utilized to ensure all students of varying backgrounds and interests and abilities so that they have the same or differing educational opportunities?
Well, I think thanks to Dr. Lopez that we have become a leader in that district. If you look at our test scores in his tenure here, we have made some huge strides. And first of all, I want to say, it's through the efforts of our teaching staff. Dr. Lopez has done a great job bringing some strategies to us. But our teaching staff, those are the people that have brought those to the students. We've worked those people very hard. We've asked them to go above and beyond, and much of that is because we continue to have an incidence of more and more free and reduced. We have more poverty in our community, and that's a trend nationwide. It's something that you're going to have to be able to deal with. We do a great job of writing individual programs. We do response to intervention, some things that we've done in the past. We've added Head Start. We also have added preschool. Those are things that we have in place to deal with those kind of things. And we, those programs are in place to deal with kids that are disadvantaged, and we'll continue to do that because the national average tells us, it's just going to continue to be more and more of a problem. So I think we'll continue what we've already got in place and do more of it.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Mrs. Slachek, same question. What tools do you feel could be utilized to ensure all students of varying backgrounds and abilities so that they have the same or perhaps differing educational opportunities?
With education and technology, the continued potential to provide equal learning for, and opportunities for the students, schools should strive to create an environment where all children are inspired to learn. Teachers are our most valued asset in any school system. And we give, if we give the teachers the tools that they need to effectively instruct our children, we can improve outcomes for those children and their life goals, no matter what their economic background or social background. And so I really believe that on equal playing field, education and technology.
Thank you, Mrs. Slachek. Mr. Lofing, same question. What tools do you feel could be utilized to ensure all students of varying backgrounds and interests, abilities, have the same or perhaps differing educational opportunities?
You're right, this is a loaded question. I just feel that over these last few years, you know, thanks to Dr. Lopez, we really did adapt well. You know, we remodeled paddock. We addressed a lot of special needs students. The preschool was a huge thing. It was probably something we should have started years ago. I think our teaching staff is wonderful. I think they do what they can for every student. I think the way they address IEP and individual learning is incredible. I cannot think of a negative thing right now that comes to my head. I hope that we are offering all students every opportunity, and if we're not, I hope that we learn how to, how to reach out and how to tell them. And we've got to educate our parents, and we've got to educate our kids, and that's what it's about.
Thank you, Mr. Lofing. Mr. Zimmerman, same question. What tools do you feel could be utilized to ensure all students of varying backgrounds, interests, and abilities so that they have the same or perhaps differing educational opportunities?
This is a very timely question since Randy Lees and I were just out at the high school at a National Association of School Boards meeting. And they are struggling with this same problem, how to create equal opportunity. And so if they are struggling with it, I don't feel so bad if I don't have the greatest answer. But applying for grants for computers, that will help level the playing field. Provide effective vocational and career planning for our students, starting with freshmen. Get them started right away and work with them throughout high school, as well as work aggressively with the students and parents to explore all the possible scholarship and financial aid opportunities that they could possibly get.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Mrs. Byers, same question. What tools do you feel could be utilized to ensure all students of varying interests, abilities, and backgrounds have the same or perhaps differing educational opportunities?
First of all, I think all expectations for all students should be equal. When they come in the door, you expect the same thing from every student. You don't look at them differently, one from the other. And you need to look at each student that they can achieve their full potential. You have the highest expectation for them and help them achieve whatever potential they can. I think technology is a huge factor in that. I think that with the teachers not having as many paras in the school system as they have in the past, they are very, very challenged each and every day. And I would like to see us reach out to the community and bring volunteers in who can work with students one-on-one. I know that Foster Grandparents does a great job, but there's not enough of them. And I think that our students, our teachers are overworked in being able to give each student everything that they need. But I do think technology is going to be a great tool to equalize the playing field for all students.
Thank you, Mrs. Byers. And Mrs. Peiper, you get the last shot at this one. What tools do you feel could be utilized to ensure all students of varying backgrounds, interests, and abilities so that they have either the same or differing educational opportunities?
Well, I believe that regardless of a child's background, they have the capacity and the capability to learn. It's our job to make sure that they reach their full potential. We have implemented a number of programs across the district from literacy nights at our elementary schools, you know, trying to engage parents, trying to, like you said earlier, to educate parents on the process, what they can do to help their child at home. We've expanded our early childhood program with the preschool program, our alternative school. I think all of those things have helped to level the playing field. PLCs, I think, have been a great tool. Our early outs on Wednesdays, it has allowed teachers time to collaborate amongst each other, to come up with courses of intervention for those students that might be, you know, on the lower end of the spectrum. But not only that, but each of our children now have an individualized learning plan regardless of their ability. I think all of those things help to level the playing field.
Thank you, Mrs. Peiper. I think we've got time for one more question, and I guess, if my charts are right, Nancy, you get to start with this one. How would you educate or inform the public on the performance of our students?
Well, actually, through Board of Education meetings, they're taped, they're live. You can inform the constituents in the district on how everyone is doing. I think that the Beatrice Daily Sun and KWBE also give the board's information out to the public. We also have a wonderful website with the Beatrice Public Schools and with information. And if, speaking with the board, coming to the meetings and speaking with the board, the people of the district can have their questions answered. And so I feel that media and information sharing is the best way to get the information out with how our students are doing.
Thank you, Mrs. Slachek. I'm going to throw a curve, and maybe Nancy will maybe give you a chance to come back to it if we have, I think we'll have time. Mr. Lofing, I'm going to rephrase the question a little bit. How would you educate or inform the public on the performance of our schools? And would you support, and I know this costs more dollars, would you support a written report to the public on how we've done the past year?
No, I definitely, I don't, I feel that school boards, schools have to be public. I don't under, I guess, yes, I would support any type of information that can be reached, sent out to the public. You know, thanks to computers, parents can check their students' progress online all the time. I think the thing that strikes me or bothers me is that when they have parent-teacher conferences, they have a very low turnout. And when they, even our board meetings, we have very few people. The most we had was when we, the orchestra thing came up, and boy, we packed the room then. So I really hope we can figure out a way to involve the public more and get more people at our meetings, or take our meetings to the public, and find more ways to communicate with the public.
Thank you, Mr. Lofing. Mr. Zimmerman, same curve. How would you educate or inform the public on the performance of our schools? And would you support a annual written report to the district on our performance?
Not to sound terribly negative, but that's going to cost money, and we're talking about budget cuts. And we have the opportunity for people to come to our meetings, to read it in the paper, to hear it on the radio, to visit the website, to talk to us one-on-one when you see us in Walmart. There- when you see us in Walmart. There, you can, there are so many opportunities available that, to add one more thing, that it sounds great and wonderful, but if you just mail them something, they might just throw it away, and does that actually get the information out there you need? So I will stop sounding negative and say, I would support it if we found out that it would do a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Mrs. Byers, same question, same curve. How would you educate or inform the public on the performance of our schools? Would you support an annual written report to the district?
I would support an annual written report to the district, but again, I am going to sound negative on this with Mr. Zimmerman, because I'm thinking, how much is that going to cost to mail out? Because it is very expensive. I really am a firm believer in the media, the newspaper, radio, but I also think that good one-to-one communication with people around you, if you're excited about what the school is doing, I think it's the responsibility of the school board to go out and say, look what we're doing, look what we've done, and if you want more information, you can go to this website. There was an article in the newspaper. KWBE has been responding to that. So I think anytime a school board member is excited about what's going on in the school and relays that to the public, I think that one-to-one communication is really, really important.
Thank you. Mrs. Peeper, same question. Would you edu, how would you educate or inform the public on the performance of our schools? And what's your thoughts on a written report, annual written report to the district?
I think, over the course of the last couple of years, as a district, we have been much better about disclosing information, sharing the results from test scores and those types of things with the public. We rely on the Beatrice Daily Sun and QWBE to help us spread that word. But outside of the local media, we've held community forums, and I don't care if there's only 20 people at each of those forums. You have to do things a number of times for those ideas to catch on. We have instituted committee of the whole. People have the opportunity to, if they can't come to the meeting, read the minutes, see how, because that's where a lot of things are discussed. We may come here on Monday nights to vote, but on those Thursday night meetings, that's where a lot of those discussions are held. I just think if we keep putting the information out there, they're going to get it. We have to be advocates for ourselves as well. And like Janet said, you know, maybe we should be out there doing a little shouting, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Peeper. Mr. Coleman, same question. How would you educate or inform the public on the performance of our schools? And what's your thoughts on a annual written report to the district?
Well, first of all, within reason, I would support anything we can do to show what our record is. So I would support, but again, it's going to depend on the cost, as to how far my support will go for that. I think that we can be positive ambassadors. I think the more we can do to tout the things we do. I say this all the time, but we don't pat ourselves on the back very well. Our teachers do a great job. We do a ton of things that sometimes go unnoticed, and we just need to continue touting our accomplishments, and then also letting people know that we're falling short. I think we've done a very good job of saying, now, we haven't met AYP, adequate yearly progress. We've got areas we've got to improve in, and we need to keep working on that. It's good to let people know that there are things that are not as good as we'd like them to be. I think engaging parents in any way that we can. We do a lot of things, but we need to get more participation, and you can't quit just because 3% show up. You get to try to get four next time, and five the time after, and keep working.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Mrs. Sodlaček, in all fairness, you didn't take up your whole time anyway, so in 30 seconds, what's your thoughts on an annual written report to the district?
Well, I would support an annual written report. Excuse me. As long as we can share it with the media and use them to get it out to the public in order to be cost-effective. And so that's what we really need to look at.
That's the last of our questions, and I apologize for throwing some curves, but I hope that that shed some light, or at least gave some ideas. Let's go to our closing statements or summations for each candidate. Let's see. I think, Monty, we start with you for closing. Mr. Lofing?
Just in closing again, I want to thank the people who voted for me in 2008. It's been a real honor to serve these past four years. Appreciate your votes on November 6th, or sooner. Doing all these things in the mail, but, come on, get a ballot, vote early. It will probably be my last term, since my daughter is a sophomore, but I am looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to the possibility of the new superintendent, and the possibility of the elementary, and finishing in the stadium, and moving forward. And so I appreciate your support and hope I get your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lofing. Mr. Zimmerman, your closing remarks.
I take pride in the things that I've helped this school board accomplish, and I feel that I've been a very good asset to the district, and I hope that with your support, I can continue to do so in the future.
That's short and sweet. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Mrs. Byers, your closing comments.
Thank you, Jim. Once again, I would like to thank the chamber and Jim for providing the opportunity for voters to hear the views of the candidates this evening. If elected, I would work to achieve the best educational opportunity for all students by working with staff, administrators, and the taxpayers. I would be a willing listener and do the research necessary to ensure that we're moving forward in a positive direction. The strengths I would bring to the school board would be in finance and budgeting, human resources, grant writing assistance, and advocating and communicating with the community about what's happening in our school system. I have a favorite quote by George Bernard Shaw. "I am of the opinion that my life belongs to the whole community, and as long as I live, it is my privilege to do for it whatever I can." I look forward to continuing to work in our community by serving on the Beatrice Public Schools School Board, and I would appreciate your vote on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Byers. Mrs. Peeper, your closing remarks?
I would like to thank the chamber and you, Jim, for hosting this evening and moderating this evening, so that we all can sit up here and air our views to the public. The strengths that I think I bring to the board, I would just like to reiterate that, I think that I have the willingness and the desire to research the issues and vote accordingly based on the research. I think, from serving on a number of other boards and committees, I think I have developed my leadership skills, my communication skills, and worked on becoming a consensus builder. That doesn't always necessarily mean majority, you know, it's going to be a 9-0 vote, but a consensus builder amongst the board. It would be my hope that if reelected, that we continue to move the district forward. We have a strategic plan in place over the course of the next five years, and it would be my hopes that if elected, that I can be a part of that process.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman, your closing remarks.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce and Jim for their sponsorship and help with the forum tonight. As I've tried to convey through my responses tonight, I believe I can offer the voters a strong voice on the District 15 Board of Education. If reelected, I will do my homework on the issues, be open to the patrons of the district, and represent them by asking questions and offering solutions, and continually looking to move Beatrice Public Schools forward. I'm committed to furthering the progress that we have made academically, facility-wise, and following the roadmap of our strategic plan. As I always have, I will put the best interest of our students first when making decisions. I'm excited that we've got six people here who are willing to donate their time for the betterment of education in Beatrice. I believe the five seats open on the Board of Education are the most important positions you'll vote for in this year's election, because 60% of your tax dollars go to the school district. So it's vitally important we elect people who are serious about moving forward and building on the work of our student, staff, administration, and our late superintendent, Dr. John Lopez. I pledge that I will be responsive to that task. I would hope that my experience, background, vision, and track record of service to District 15 would give you confidence that I can continue to represent all of you on the Board of Education. I will always value your input, be a tireless worker and supporter for public education in Beatrice, and I would appreciate your vote on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Mrs. Sodlaček, your closing remarks.
I would like to thank the chamber and Jim for this opportunity of this forum, and all of you that are viewing this on TV or listening, and those of you that are with us tonight. I will work for the district and with the Board of Education members in cooperative effort to enhance the goals set forth by the board. We will work together to provide the best services possible for the students in our districts, giving them the tools to survive and thrive in the future. I want to have the chance to give back to the community. In closing, I would be honored to represent the district and the community that have supported our family. This is my opportunity to give back. Back to those that have given so much to us, and I would also appreciate your vote in November, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sodlaček. Thank you all for coming and, quite frankly, putting up with me and a few curve balls. As I indicated, this will be rebroadcast, and I'm not sure of the exact times, and we appreciate all of you that have attended tonight and have submitted questions. And more importantly, if you don't vote, you don't get a voice, so please get out and vote. Thank you.